Oh, call the beaguard. For Ben and Gledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, any corrections? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Approval of agenda and conditions.
Move to approve, which is current, which down additions?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Visitors and delegations, they're not on the agenda. Suzie Kenner, from Lake Area Chamber, letting support for addition access.
As you can see, I brought my grass cart with me.
That's good.
Also on his family way. Glad to see him.
He's just handing out a couple maps for you. We're here today to let you know that we are putting in a grant to the Outdoor Heritage Fund that is due on April 1st for three shore fishing areas in the Devil's Lake area. One is up on a Channel A area. The second one is over in East Bay, I believe it's Oxtreme's addition area by the water plant there. And then the third one is over off Henniger Landing. So we've been working through the Lake Access Committee, I think we had about eight different sites early this fall that we were looking at, and we dwindled it down to the three locations. So Mike has been working diligently and put some costs associated with it together. And the total project was about $464,500. So we went to the city commission last night, and the city voted to approve $100,000 in monetary donations to go towards the project. And then they also voted in $60,000 to go towards the project costs. Mike's time, legal fees, that sort of thing, to move the project forward. So we pretty much have the 25% match that we need. So we're asking for roughly right around $385,000 from the Outdoor Heritage Fund here on April 1st. So we are asking today, we'll answer any questions on the project that you may have, and if you want to go into more detail if you'd like, but we are asking today from the county for aid, support of the project. If we can get like a letter of support or something to go in with a packet just saying that, you know, moving forward, you'd love to see these projects, you know, come up on Devil's Lake. And then, you know, monetarily, if you'd like to throw anything at the project, we'd be more than happy to accept that as well. Like I said, we have the 25% match. But the way that the Outdoor Heritage Fund works is it goes on a scoring basis. So the more money we have to match towards that, the better our point basis is. We've gone to, or will be going to, the Water Board, Water Commission on next Tuesday. They are looking at possibly donating the land up on the Channel A area for parking and then also access. Game and Fish has donated $30,000 towards the project and $15,000 worth of a fishing pier. Or they prefer that Channel A location. And then I'll be going to Tourism on Monday, asking for $5,000. We're gonna ask for money from the Lake Access Committee. And then we have some smaller organizations that are putting in money as well to go towards it. The unique thing about it and why the cost went up as it did is because for shore fishing, there isn't a lot of areas right now where you can go and have a decent location. A lot of the area is full of ripraps, so you really have to be mobile to get over those racks, and they can be slippery. So this will allow access for anybody, but we're hoping that they will grant us the full asking for the grant and they will be ADA compliant. So they will be accessible by wheelchairs and that sort of thing. And Mike can go into a little bit more detail as far as the systems and if you have any questions on that.
Some question I have, this will all be boat access then? No?
Nope, it's for shore fishing.
Just for shore fishing?
Yep, shore fishing only, yep. One of them, the Henniger Landing area, will be right off of the boat ramp area. We'll utilize that area. And that'll be a nice feature because it will have the fish cleaning station there as well as the vault toilet already. And then the East Bay site, we can look at putting in a playground, the parking area, and also a vault toilet over there. So there's a few details we need to work through yet with Lake Access as far as maintenance. You know, who's gonna take care of pulling those dock systems in and out? We'll probably have to put under the maintenance contract for trash collection, that sort of thing. But I think we'll very easily be able to work through those details.
Okay, who's gonna take care of the trash?
Well, yeah, well, right now, Jolder, yep, has that contract, so we'll probably have to look at reworking that contract a little bit.
And along with the handicap ramp, we did add a courtesy dock and access ramp on the Henniger, so that the boats don't try to use the handicap one to wait in line for to get on the boat ramp. So that was a good average from that group.
Yep, exactly.
Channel A, I mean, are road access up there? I mean, are gravel roads good shape?
Yes, the gravel roads, they're, you know, it's right next to the bridge that exists just south of the gates for Dry Lake and Channel A. We do have to meet with a lot of Resource District, you know, it's their property, to make sure that they're on board with it. I did visit with Dwayne Ash, he's fully supportive of the project. And there'd be some sort of lease type agreement from the Water Resource District or the county to the Access Committee or the Game and Fish Department related to the use of that area for fishing access. That particular location from a Game and Fish perspective and a fishing perspective is very nice, but it's a little bit off the beaten path from the city, that's correct.
Game and Fish is very much interested in that though.
They are. The issue that we have at a couple of locations is just the elevation that we have to make up from the top of the bank, from the top of the riprap down to the water's edge. And because the water, we understand the water can fluctuate, it can come up, it can go down. So we have to have these ramps constructed in sort of a modular fashion. If we have to add a section or two to chase the lake down, or if we have to remove a section or two if the lake comes up. And then we have to make sure that we're removing those bottom sections in the winter time because we all know how the ice can thrust up on the shoreline. We wanna make sure these things don't get destroyed in the process. The idea is we're going to try to the extent practical to... Because of the elevations issues that we have, there isn't necessarily an ADA compliance that you have to meet. But if you don't meet that or get very close to that, it won't be utilized. And the whole idea is that there's a lot of people in the area that are elderly, can't launch their boats, can't cross the riprap, people in wheelchairs, people that are physically disabled. And the whole idea is to try and meet that ADA compliance to the extent practical so that it gets utilized and it's available for people with those disabilities.
And I'm sure the Heritage Fund would look very favorable to that.
We're hoping to garnish local support, have those letters and, you know, it's one of those quality of life things, and we're hopeful that they would look at it that way as well.
Why do they need it?
They haven't set the date yet, I don't believe. The grants are due by April 1st at 5:00. And then looking, you know, the way they look at it.
After the session, actually.
So I'm assuming it needs some time either towards the end of April or early May. So by the end of May, we should have the answer.
Is this top half north?
That's correct.
So you're gonna move the parking basically to the other side of the road? You know, right now, then your parking area.
It was up there Sunday evening, and with the signage that's up there now, it's a complicated mess.
It is, it's a disaster, and we fight with the farmers every year on that. So this is a great idea to get a parking place.
I did see a sign that said parking, and there was an arrow, but right next to it was another sign that said no parking.
Yep, yep.
And then authorized vehicles only, and then there was no trespass.
Yep.
And I didn't know where to go once I heard that.
No, they got a lot of signs, they could not tell me anything.
What's the money the city put in, $60,000, and then what was the other figure?
$100,000 monetary, and then...
Total?
$160,000 total.
$100,000.
Yep, yep. And then $60,000 mostly for income.
And this is 480, is that what you're using for total money?
484,500.
460?
No, 464,500. Yeah, it's like 385.
When did you find this part of them?
What's that? As soon as we can, as soon as we find out from the Heritage, Outdoor Heritage Fund, you know, if we've received the grant and what we have received. There's an area on the grant where we have to stipulate if they give us partial funding. So we'll have to look at what we would end up cutting in the event that we get partial funding. So, and that has to be cut.
This east-west road at Channel A, that's a decent road, I mean, it's got some gravel on it, I mean, it's all right.
From the west is...
Going west, coming in from the west is...
Yeah, you can't really access it from the least way you can, but a lot more difficult. You have to know where you want to come from, but the west is easy, it's gravel all the way.
Right, I can tell the commission, like I told the city commission last night, that it's not perfect. None of the sites are perfect. The access points aren't perfect. We're looking at where do we have the land available? How can we develop access for, you know, the physically disabled folks? And the Lake Access Committee as a committee, working with, we have a county representative on there, Suzie, Lake Region Anglers, Devil's Lake, Lake Region Sportsman, they've approached, back there, they've...
Channel A is an idea.
They've offered up at least $500 towards the project, and they're the ones that came up with the Channel A. Not so perfect, it's just kind of the best that we can develop at this point.
Do you have some landowner representation on your Access Committee? You know, landowners?
No.
No?
Ramsey County, for Channel A.
We get to handle the landowners?
And Devil's, and Devil's Lake owns the two access points for Henniger Landing and the East Bay pump station, as part of the flood protection. So I think the real estate is government owned, but you're talking about people driving on the roadways?
Because if you're looking at Channel A, that road that goes east, I would hope it's marked, you know, that poor access or whatever you want to put on it, it's not really a usable road. I don't think it goes anywhere, does it?
All the post has a campground to the west of North and...
But the road going east goes nowhere, right? It goes to Prairie Trail.
The road going up there is being underwater, you have to go over a mile and then often come down from the water.
We're gonna mark that road so people aren't falling down there and getting out and stuck. I mean, we deal with a lot of different people here in this Lake Access, so, and they're not all from North Dakota.
Right, yeah, we'd have to look at signage.
All you have to do is put it down inside, you know. The gravel road is good until it gets to the slope.
Right, but I, you know what I'm gonna say?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, halfway up there, there's a Prairie Trail that goes back to the south that if you don't have four-wheel drive in the frame, forget it, you're done.
Everybody's got curios, so you...
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll go look at it.
Our county pulled up a lot of those. At this point, we haven't discussed signage to get people to that location. People that are locals that fish that area will know that it's there. Whether, you know, whether we advertise and put signs out to bring people around to get ready.
Cell phones take care of that.
Are they gonna go have dampen? Have a little dampen placed there?
Yep, ask Jim.
Is it a way gaffin?
Yep.
This is the, this is the area that had trouble before, and then...
Well, that's a disaster. If you, if the whitebacks were biting, there'd be 40 cars parked on that bridge. And then you gotta have a farmer come down there with the tractor and...
The water board's had quite a time with it, right?
Yes.
We've had issues with them before, yeah.
Yes.
That's why I like this parking wave, you know, way off the side.
South, yeah.
And to the south, there's lots of room. Where they did that little thing on the north there, that's not enough room to turn around and park cars.
And they used to go all the way up, put the pole structure in and then went up.
Yeah, you know, you say you're not gonna advertise it, but Mike, we sent cell phones to get that done for you, so... They won't be all North Dakota cell phones either, so...
Well, and if you're gonna have it, if you're gonna have a handicap accessible, don't you look on what staff they advertise for, I think?
Channel A is not gonna, that's gonna be handicap too?
Intent is all three locations would be very close to meeting that requirement. You know, the thing that we've wrestled with at the Lake Access Committee is whether or not to sign it.
Channel A, if you have a handicap accessible, is Henniger Landing?
Oh.
Aren't great, Myrna. At this point, that's what we're asking for, under grant.
And if we've got the 25% match for all three of them, we might as well go for it all. Having a letter of support would be at least, we believe, for... Motion to approve a letter of support for the grant application.
Can we have a motion and a second? Support of the three access sites? So that I understand is correctly, the city's put 160 into it?
Correct. We have some other meetings in the next two weeks with some different organizations for funding as well. They're the major player in this and the one that will be sponsoring the grant.
We've all dealt with fishermen in the country, you know, and feelings get stressed and... But I can see this to be very beneficial for a lot of people, as long as it's...
Well, and I think I will too, especially on the tourism side of things. Right now, there isn't a lot of places for us to send people. And we'll get people in on a daily basis, sometimes more than one group of people wondering where they can go and fish. And, you know, it's families with little kids, it's elderly people that don't have, you know, access to a boat. It's across the gamut, and we don't really have a lot of good places to send them. So I think if we can establish a couple of nice areas and send people to those locations, you know, if they find somewhere else to fish along the side of the road, you know, great. But if, you know, they wanna utilize what we have to give them, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Let me ask you this question, because we've asked North Dakota Game and Fishes before to put money into the rotten road project. So there was parking for fishermen, and they just, pretty much, they laughed at us. And they knew. And it's not our problem, you know, let people find their own way. What kind of response have you gotten from them? Have you talked to North Dakota Game and Fish?
Yeah, that's sort of, as part of this project, you know, they've offered $30,000 cash and $15,000 worth of fishing pier toward the project. So $45,000 of the $465,000 project costs is coming from the Game and Fish.
And I know...
They do have specific projects that they look at funding and other projects, roadway improvements or some things. They're very specific on what they're willing to cost sharing and what they're not willing to do, so...
And I think some of that runs into problems with the DOT as well. I know on the Grams Island Road, Henry Deray was working really closely with them to see if they could get some parking areas along that road. And I believe what happened was they were denied through the state. And so they went out and threw some nice gravel down in a few areas for parking on their own, just so that people...
Along the Grams Island?
Yeah, so people have some nice areas. So I don't think some of that has essentially anything to do with Game and Fish. I think they would love to help out if they could, but I think they're hazard tight in some of those locations where the roads have just gotten so narrow. They don't, I don't think the DOT really wants people parking along there, so...
Just briefly, could you tell us the other sites that you were, you got eight, eight total? Eight total sites, you considered?
There is a few of them. There was an area over by Hayville Heights that we were looking at. We were looking at Lakewood.
The area along Highway 20, south of the Dyke, that was another area that was looked at. You know, getting back to your question related to some of the parking adjacent to the highway, in the years past, there was a handicap fishing pier that was available along the Henniger Landing. And that was place adjacent to the flood protection. So you had a handicap accessible ramp that was on the water, but you had to cross 40 feet of riprap shoreline to get there. So it really kind of, and we had worked with the Department of Transportation. At that time, that was before Highway 19 was raised as we went over the dyke west of the airport. And Highway 19 was very flat, had a very wide berm on it, and it wasn't that much higher than the water. So we were hopeful that we could move that ADA compliant ramp over there and provide access. And the DOT was not interested in that because they did not want to advertise parking and fishing off of the state highway.
You know, like you just said, like, to walk over 40 feet of rocks, that's, that really can do something to go fishing for a whole lot of people, you know, it's not safe. So yes, I'm very much in favor of getting more access to the lake for people to fish from shore. But we're gonna make sure that we get your land concerns and safety on the roads. We have people parking on Highway 2 out here, Corley, you know, bug by 75 mile an hour here. Some little kid would come up to the tabletop here, you know, run along the side of the boat. I mean, that's not a good deal either, but I know that's not your concern. But the state highway, they kind of don't have a concern over it either, so... But it's access we need to get, you're right.
The Henniger Landing and the East Beach also provide a lot of maybe independence for the boat launch areas that are there because the kids now go out there and fish off these docks, and then the boats come in, and everybody has to push each other out of the way. So they can limit it to there in the Henniger Landing, the Lakewood kids can ride their bikes out to that one. And the East Beach ones, old kids on South Henniger County, right down to that one. And it just makes it a lot easier for kids to go up to that.
Just the actual app?
Self alone, if you look at the overall one, it's just...
Down by the pump station.
It's west of the pump station.
That's actually the old pump station.
Okay. I was wondering if it was off the Pops Road, it's one more over.
So I hope that someday that that could potentially be hooked to a bike cap. You know, if we could ever get a bike cap along the dyke.
I was just gonna say, you have a bike cap, it's called the dyke.
That one even utilizes playground equipment and stuff like that, so that's really, it's just a quarter of a mile out of town or away from residential area.
Adam, you got any questions?
Yeah, I don't think a fishing pier should be talking. I mean, how many individuals are gonna be able to use it at any given, what a feature and call free at any given time?
The size varies at the locations, but we're looking at five-foot width and anywhere from 40 up to 80 feet of length total.
Okay.
And a lot of the fishing piers that we were looking at, of course, there's any number of different manufacturers for that type of equipment, but some of them are modular in fashion as well. So you can increase the size, you can kind of modify it to a specific application. The big concern that we have with those fishing piers in Devil's Lake is that you have such a large water body and you can generate such a large wave. To put these things out there and put something out there that's going to withstand the waves that they can receive. None of the sites are perfect, none of them are going to be designed for that F5 tornado type wave, okay? So we'll have to put it together and, you know, hopefully we can get them anchored and they'll last. That's a concern that Game and Fish has, that's a concern we have. But we can sit and look at the water all we want and not do anything, or we can say, you know, we're gonna try it and see what happens, and that's our approach.
Myrna, Adam, did you go there all that?
Yeah. Yeah, I got a, I have a follow-up question. Who's, I mean, we all know freezes in the winter time, who's gonna be in charge of? Are they gonna be permanently anchored down, or who's gonna be in charge of it? Do we have to pull them or whatever? I mean, who's in charge of the animal maintenance expense?
The Channel A one, we're hoping will be able to stay a year round. And then as far as the other ones go, we'll have to work through it with city as well as probably Lake Access, pulling up the walking systems up high enough along with the piers itself.
Okay, I'm always in favor of giving as much access as we can within reason. I mean, it's a huge, who is the community? So it's just a matter of, you know, gotta make sure we don't give ourselves an ongoing funding issue going forward, but I don't think it'll be too big of a deal if we can work through that.
We would ask the county to consider that when they allocate funds for Lake Access for six footers.
Are there liability issues involved in this? That the county or the city would be responsible for?
Lani?
I, I don't see how. At this point, the counties, you know, for financing, a number of years ago, the county designated the boat landings as county parks so we could... The county commission then levy to mill levy for the county parks. I don't know if the commission would be looking at designating these as additional county parks. But the financing limit that we would have would be that county park mill levy limit. As far as liability, you know, if it's, if it's a county park, then designated a county park, it could have some more liability for the county. If it's not, then it wouldn't.
Really, the only one that would be considered in the county would be Channel A, correct? The other two are actually, you know, considered in the city, right?
Yeah.
And how are we covered for our county parks where we now want, as far as liability?
I think the Devil's Lake Access Committee has liability. Don't you cover the liability on all the... We have some fish cleaning stations that we cover under our liability through, I think that one's through state fire tornado.
The one that heads, we do?
I'd have to look it up in our, I know we have some fish cleaning stations, so...
Okay, we should.
And some that are gone, that are eliminated, so, but it's under our state fire tornado policy, so...
For your benefit, we should find that out, so...
You know, I missed it, Lani could visit with Doug Brodean, but I...
Well, I know we have, we donate, I shouldn't say donate, we levy $8,000 a year. It used to be $6,000, and we went to $8,000 to the county park fund, which is the Devil's Lake Access that we sent it to. So that was our portion for this year, so...
Mike?
Doug Brodean approached the committee with the Lake Region Sportsman, but he had made the comment that there's state laws in place that if you're allowing recreational access for facilities, that it fairly reduces any liability that state sheds out liability. So there's a law in the books, and I don't know exactly, he didn't quote some section, but he... Well, he actually did quote a section, but I don't remember it.
Now, the key is just having coverage and let the insurance companies assess risk. So as long as anything that the county has an interest in, we make sure that we're covered, so...
Suzie, would any of that in-kind match? Would that, any of our liability insurance or anything like that, you know, be able to count as an in-kind match too, or have we got all our in-kind money taken care of?
I believe all of our in-kind money is taken care of, correct? I think we're at the 25, we're at the 25%, I believe, correct?
You're giving a lot, you're giving a lot.
Well, that's based on an estimate, and who knows how good that estimate is. I put it together so I can say that, but... You know, the big issue, one of the big ticket items on that is the ramps. We have many, many feet, hundreds of feet of ramp and piers that have to be installed with that. And it's really, it's a unique feature. And if you look and visiting with different manufacturers for those ramps, you know, how high a quality of ramp, you know, we want a good quality, commercial grade ramp. And the cost for those things can be upwards of $300 per foot. That's really the item that is the, you know, the gorilla in the room, social cost estimate. As far as developing the parking lots, that's pretty straightforward. Providing the access to guardrail, all of those items are fairly straightforward. But those ramps, we're talking $100,000, there's $50,000 in there for the fishing piers. Those are big ticket items that depending upon the manufacturer, who bids on it, who's comfortable with providing some sort of warranty and meeting our requirements. That's what I'm concerned with, with the estimate. So if our estimate's good... So if our estimate's good, we're covered, but if it comes into a six hundred thousand dollar project, you know, we're gonna have to look at something, yeah.
But as far as the eight thousand dollars goes that you give towards lake access every year, I, I have a meeting called for next week and I'm gonna ask that the access committee put a thousand dollars towards the project. But realistically, the costs have gone up so much for maintaining all of those fish cleaning stations. So we're, we're pretty much right even, if not even in the hole a little bit. We did get an increase from Game and Fish this year for our fish cleaning stations, so we should be okay. But we're, the three fish cleaning stations on the site itself, I believe we're dumping once a week in the summertime, maybe once every couple weeks, depending. But that year-round fish cleaning station, we have to dump those every ten days. And we learned not the hard way, but you know, it's just, it's gotten expensive to run everything. So we have asked for an increase in funds and we'll probably be back again in the future to do so with all the entities, so.
And that's really the only opportunity the county has to do it because we don't have any money that we, other than our mill levies and stuff like that. I did share that with the rest of the commission too, Suzie, but tell them a little bit about how the little stickers are going.
Well, we're going.
What we tried to, you know, we tried to come up with an ingenious idea to come up with a little bit more money and, and from what I've heard, they've been catching on.
Yes, we haven't been actively promoting those and we will start here in April. We put together two decals, one is a business decal that a business can buy for fifty dollars. It's just a little window sticker you can put on your business door, window, whatever. And then we have individual stickers that people can purchase for ten dollars that just go in the little windshield of your, of your car that just says, "I promote," or "I support Devil's Lake, Lake Access." And then we also put a donation box in the year-round fish cleaning station to help ask for funds when people are in there. We've collected, I just did the financials today, total between both, we've collected three hundred and fifty-seven dollars since we started the project. Yeah, so it's, that's helping a little bit. I lost the bet as far as if the donation box is still the upper, it's still up there. Yeah, so that's going well. I think we just geared up fifty-six dollars on there this week. So it's helping. We get a lot of in-state visitors that really appreciate that year-round station and they've been throwing money in as well as local people. But we are gonna push those with the Farwell Moorhead Wildlife Club as well as the Lake Region Ranger Meeting. We're gonna have them out at the corn-fed eating fish fry in September. We're gonna have them at the chamber fishing tournament, so we're gonna try to get the word out starting, so it'll pick up.
Just had a thought here, and Kevin, I'm sure could handle the signage on that road out there by Channel A. So when they come out of the parking lot, are you familiar with this map, Kevin?
I know the way to land.
Yeah, so we could put a sign up there, "Road closed," or "Dead end," or something like that. We could definitely help with that as far as the county road, and I think that would be, go through traffic, maybe?
I think we should close the road closed, so it won't say anybody down there.
I think that would be a good gesture for landlords in that area, you know, that they're not going over there and following up some street over there. That would be good, so. But we could definitely help with that, we could, probably add to the motion, that'd be already-
Okay.
Could we take care of some of that signage out there? Anything else, Mark?
No.
Myrna?
No.
I guess the only question I have, are we gonna discuss the possibility of being able to donate a little funding to that, or?
Well, one question I had, I guess, I was thinking, I was gonna ask it, but I guess I will. Sure the city's taking out their sales tax revenue, right? I would guess, I would guess they're taking out their sales tax.
I don't know where they're taking out of it, there was a rule on that.
Right, yeah, I totally understand half of it, I mean, I'm just guessing where they're taking it off.
The up to one hundred thousand dollars in cash is coming out of our infrastructure funds, which that infrastructure fund is funded through sales tax. The other amount of sixty thousand is in-kind associated with engineering fees that we typically assign to a project. The city's policy is to assign sixteen percent of the project cost as engineering, administrative, legal fees. In this particular case, the discussion was many of the features, the docks, the ramps, the piers, are going to be purchase items. So we may have two hundred thousand dollars in the purchase of items, playground equipment and such, that we would be charging sixty percent for. And that would eat up a lot of the money that we're taking into this, and so they, they agreed that they would donate the engineering fees as well. But they would be hosted as an in-kind match because that is our, that is the city policy.
So can Suzie come back to us when we're working on our budget for next year? Can we contribute in the future even though we can't at this time?
Definitely do that.
Any other questions? Adam?
No, I think that sounds like a good one.
You're good, okay. Okay, all payers say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we got a lot of support.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Do you wanna draw that up or whatever and then I'll assign it, or?
Whatever, whatever you prefer.
I'll put it on there. What'd you say?
Yeah, if you-
You want, why don't you draw it up, Suzie?
I agree that.
Because you know what you want.
Okay, perfect, I will do that this week, I'll get that to you. And then moving forward, as we turn in the grants application, we will keep you guys up to speed as far as where we're at and what we get, and hopefully we get full consented, so.
Great, thank you. What's the next thing we have done?
Kevin.
Kevin, okay, go ahead.
Okay, first thing, the backlash on the engine three, do you know? Backlash on the endland valves on the three new, down here, motor grates need to be set and the estimated cost is fourteen hundred dollars each, so. Like a motion, go ahead and get that done.
What, what are you, explain to me what you gotta do to set up, how you want to get that back up.
It's part of maintenance after two thousand hours, you're supposed to set the valves on the diesel engine.
Lot of warranty?
No. It never is, it doesn't matter who the vendor is, I mean, it's part of maintenance, it's like buying an oil filter or buying a tire or.
They can make a motion to, to that, they have a motion to-
On second.
They have a second? A little bit of rope on?
Olsen?
Aye.
Leifon?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Hi, sir, I'm sorry.
Aye.
And the second thing, of course, y'all know that the load limits have gone on already, but just like a motion to put those into effect and take them off at the same time that the state highways go into effect and come off. Something we do every year.
Okay, motion or not? Have a motion, you have a second, all payers say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And I slipped everyone a message about the Curry District Blade Operator and advertising to replace that position. So I did put an ad in the paper that's marked just for your information. Well, are you in motion on that, Elizabeth, or how does that work?
I think we have an app, so it would work.
No, we need a motion there.
Blade Operator? Have a motion, advertising Curry District Blade Operator, have a second?
Second.
Second, all payers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion Curry, discussion on projects for twenty-one oh three.
Okay, I don't know if, I don't know if I was at the meeting on the twelve, well, but we did present-
Could you have Kevin come and sit in my chair so I can hear your turn?
Sure. So at the meeting, we did present the two projects, the Truck Route project and Ramsey County Eight project to finish that up by Laton. And we didn't have all the paperwork done at the time, so we have to get the thumbs up from the committee later, which I don't think will be a problem on those two. But that's not gonna be enough to spend all of our money, so we need to look at, come up with another project. And we've talked about Ramsey County Nine, today Paul and I drove up to Ramsey County Nine from four east to the county line, to the Walsh County line. And there's, I think we came up with three culverts that should be replaced. So even replace those three culverts, I don't think is gonna use all our money up, so we could do a thin lift overlay there, which we have to come to the estimate and see how close we are now after that. But I don't know if we have any other projects that we don't look at, or what do you guys think?
That would seem to be a, you know, a project that we felt pretty strongly about when we were talking about it earlier in the projects and stuff, so looking that we could do for that section up there will probably-
Pretty high on our priority list, isn't it?
It is the next one on our five-year road plan, yes.
Part of the part, go ahead.
Exactly, as we've got it prioritized and that would only make sense to do nine if we're, if we're gonna have the money to do it.
Yep.
And what else will we get as far as we think of that, because that's, we'll continue on with that on the next round, bro.
We did talk about putting some additional gravel on the Truck Route, on the Phase One, let's call it, of the Truck Route. And we can work that into part of Phase Two, right? As a, as a, you know, in Phase Two, we would be putting more gravel on Phase One, if that makes sense.
More than six inches, you asked for, Paul?
That, that's what we have on the current project with close. Don't think that's enough, I guess we had figured on fifteen total before pavement. So, you know, anything that we can put on now would be a good idea. The only problem we're running into is with the phasing of it, if we don't, if we aren't gonna pave it for, you know, three, four years, you're not gonna wanna have class five aggregate as your surface course, 'cause it will, I don't know.
Keep washing more.
Yeah, it, it doesn't have as much binder as class thirteen, but then when you pave, you don't wanna be paving on class thirteen 'cause it doesn't drain. So it's kind of, it's all right to have class thirteen down six inches that we're putting on now through the whole project, then build class five up from there. And then if we aren't gonna pave it for quite a while after that, it might make sense to put a couple inches of class thirteen as a cap on that, and that might be enough to shed water. And as far as the structural numbers go, I mean, that's where a lot of support, the two classes of aggregate are about the same, strength-wise. It's just the drainage that we'll worry about. So you can either stage it as doing, having Phase Two of the project on the Truck Route, be to start at US Highway Two and come around the curve to where we finish up the close and put on whatever section of gravel you wanna put on there, or add the gravel, I think a section of gravel for the whole thing. Or I guess those are the two options for the Truck Route, it makes sense to me. But I think if you're gonna go up any further with gravel, then it probably shouldn't be all the way to the top, so you don't have to peel off any.
But we've got funding for what we've got set up now?
I was sort of thinking, yes, we haven't done the estimates yet, but just, function numbers, we think we have.
I mean, shooting from the hip, I think that what we had estimated before was around four hundred thousand for the South, US Highway Two up to the curve. That, yeah, that makes, that makes sense, 'cause with our bid prices too, 'cause we were both, a million for two miles and this is one mile, so about half of that. There's a lot of that dirt to move in there. So then with Ramsey County Eight, finishing up through Laton, we were at seven hundred thousand for, or seven hundred and forty-two, I think it was, no, six forty, six eighty-two. For five miles, we're doing another four and a half. So I guess that's in the five or six hundred thousand range. Ramsey Nine, if we did the thin lift overlay and the whole thing, you're probably looking at about a million and a half, so that would pretty much take out the whole budget. And that would be without doing those culverts, so that's, I mean, just rough numbers, I don't know.
You gotta do the culverts first, though, don't you?
Right, I agree, but the nice thing about doing the culverts first and then doing the thin lift overlay with it, is you can, that's real scalable. I mean, you can just stop paving where you're running out of funds, so.
That sounds like a good plan. Twenty-one oh three is just for, it's for the two-year cycle, then?
Yes.
There will be no money left for the next year out of twenty-one oh three?
Not for twenty sixteen, no. Twenty-one oh three includes construction of fifty and at sixteen. In other words, we won't be getting any additional money in twenty sixteen.
Sounds like from rather, or the other people we work with, that it's gonna be a mix of, you know, counties that are looking to get all their work done this year and are gonna flood the Maricopa projects, and some that are pulling off till next year, 'cause they won't have their designs done, so. I think there'll be, I think it'll be pretty steady overall, so I don't, I don't think it's gonna make a whole lot of difference bid price-wise, whether you do it this year or next year.
And the legislature did go for putting more money into the great plan studies so that, you know, we can further identify the need for the next legislative session as well?
Well, that's the way I understood it, trying to clear through the system.
Yep, so with no guarantee, but, but that's where they're headed, is to keep, give this up so all our roads come up to one oh five five overtime.
Yep.
Yep.
The speed, well, this new bill has a speed limit of fifty-five, too.
Oh, fifty-five, yeah.
Minimum, yeah.
Unless you have a curb or something like that, you could get away for, for that, right?
So that's the way to pursue it, is the Truck Route and Ramsey Eight being our first and second priority, and Ramsey Nine will be our third priority, depending on how the funding comes out. We'll do the culverts first for sure and then go from there.
I guess, go ahead. Sorry, I guess the other, other option, I guess, is if you wanted to hold off on, you know, say if you had the culverts and, or the thin lift overlay at nine, if you wanted to get some more of the aggregate on the Truck Route, or get all, I guess, all the aggregate on the Truck Route, but that would be an option too, scale it that way, because I guess it depends where, which, which one of those two you want for our test.
Do you need that prioritized today, or can we start moving in that direction and then figure it out?
Well, I guess the-
Once you get, once you get the costs on nine a little bit more figured out, will we know?
Well, I guess that's the other thing too, is that we should probably, the Truck Route and Ramsey Eight, both we've already done the engineering selection for those with the Senate Bill, or with the House Bill money, I guess, and that wasn't funding specific. So I mean, we can just go ahead and, since those are phase projects that are already, we've already done the RFP process for those, we can go ahead and keep working on those, whatever extent we wanna go, wanna do, because those were spelled out as a whole route.
Do you have it prioritized, or how do you, how are we gonna do this?
We probably should, I would imagine, yes.
So then I guess the difference, the clarification that we'd need to have then is whether, whether we're just gonna do the grading work on the Truck Route up to the current project and six inches of gravel, or whether we wanna gravel up to the final surface through the whole thing.
And there's sufficient funds for that, Paul?
Right, but it would just, it would cut how much we could do on Ramsey Nine.
Right.
The other thing is, is it would've been nice, Mike would've been wrong to know, what, you know, what, when are we gonna be at the diversion goal in there so we make sure that we're ready for that when, when that happens and they start doing the overpasses?
Next year?
So, I mean, we don't wanna be in the middle of our process either, we wanna make sure that we're at that time so we get some class thirteen or something on that in time to stabilize it before we have heavy traffic on it.
Right.
I mean, would that, does that make sense, or?
Yeah, that's been my issue.
Don't we have an end date on this, end of this year?
On the straits, actually, the two point three miles, I think it's October seventeenth. On the, on the straight side, the two point three miles, I think it's October seventeenth of this year.
Yeah.
The close is supposed to be done.
But the rest of it, we don't?
Well, well, no.
Well, if we add on to it, you won't, you, you know, he might not make that end date if we add on to it.
Right, I would expect that.
Oh, now, we gotta get right of way in, a lot of hurdles to jump through, we have, we have a little environmental stuff.
So that'll be another.
We really haven't done a hell of a lot since we, uh, only get to shovel red now.
Well, the environmental's done.
Oh, it's done?
Yeah, the white land stuff is all, you know, ecological, that's all done, did all that.
Well, you right of ways you gotta get.
I think there's eight, but still.
We never worked on any of them?
Well, we didn't have, didn't know for sure, and we still don't know for sure if this project is gonna be approved by the group, so I guess, they're just gonna want.
Oh, yeah.
So what right of ways are you talking about? Um, are you talking about the truck route again, the north south road and the truck route?
Right, from, from care, so, yeah, from Stratocorporation, CHS, Peterson Construction, um, a few others in there.
'Cause we got the right of way for the, for the curve and the land that is in the process, right?
Right.
The curve was land?
Phase one, right.
Yeah, phase one, and then all the way through the curve, we have the right of way for it.
Right, so is there any privately owned property on that north south road that we gotta get right of way for? I mean, other than, other than, um, businesses?
Yes, there will be.
Yeah, there's a couple in there. But I think they're basically business properties, so that it would be, I'm guessing they're commercial.
They have a storage closet, it's not just private?
Yeah, I can put that as well.
When is your committee meeting again, or do you just email the projects out?
Right, so the selection committee, I guess they go through DOT first, through Brian, he says what they're, where they think they're all going on, right? Then they come out to Kevin, Sharon from Walsh County, and Dave from Towner.
So you'll go right later on?
Yeah, I'll come and find out.
That, that would pass, that, whether it approved or not.
And there was some quick discussion at the meeting on the twelfth, whether the truck route was enough different from the rugby project, uh, so that, that was another reason why, I guess we were holding off a little bit on it.
There wasn't very much discussion on that, though?
Not a lot, I guess it was just, I think we'll get, get through, I don't think it's gonna be a big deal.
State highway's very much in my favor, I would say, if that reacts to me, so.
Yeah, and, and I know that's-
I think Brian was doing it.
I think so.
Yeah.
I talked to David McGee today.
Oh, okay.
He might be the one.
He has no problem with it.
Oh, okay, all right, that's someone else we're-
Compared to the truck route, I don't know why they didn't go along that truck route rugby, you know? For safety reasons, like that commissioner said, should be enough to pass that in its own, you know, just maybe save the route.
And that's what Brian was, uh, Brian Fuchs was out of heart for a minute.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, but I, I think it would've got a thumbs up, but, uh,
Oh, yeah.
After the gentleman from Pierce County spoke about the safety reasons, he needed that. And if anybody's ever been on it, it takes a lot of traffic away from the other main route up to that area, so.
So I guess my suggestion would be to go ahead with the truck route and put the additional gravel on, I mean, it's a good opportunity to get it done, get it paid for. If we decide to pave it two years from now, ten years from now, it'll be there, so.
Be there.
Yeah.
Would that make sense?
And then have Ramsey eight as our second, either, it doesn't matter which person, second, but those two would be our top priorities and then and try and get the culverts on nine.
So I'll make a motion to that effect, prioritize it with eight, the truck road. And then, um, and that would include the extra gravel on the north south road on the truck road.
Okay, we have a motion that affects our second?
Aye.
Have a second, any other discussion, questions?
Just for clarity, the, the extra gravel would go on the north, south, and the east, west?
Right, but you already have that implemented into the plan for the east, west road, right?
No, we don't know, no, we ran, we ran out of money at six inches.
Thanks for clarifying that.
That, that's, that's my only question, is feasibly speaking, are, are we gonna, if, if we rolled the projects together and, and just, we put the gravel on, since, you know, we're talking about prioritizing that, are we gonna be able to get it done in this construction season, so it's ready for next spring when they shut down the viaduct?
That's what we're gonna shoot for.
Okay, that doesn't mean, 'cause, doesn't make a lot of sense to, to devote our money to the truck road and then not get it done.
Right, I agree.
For next season.
Right, so that's why it should all be ruled into one.
Our biggest hurdle would be the, the right of way, purchasing the right of way.
Okay, well, if we get started on the right of way, we can hopefully get it done this year, then.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, before we move off that, then with Ramsey nine, we, we're planning a chip seal, we're asking for bids right now for a chip seal on that job, and knowing how that's gonna end up, we're gonna have to cut that out of our project and wait a year on it, or, or what we're gonna do. But just so you're aware, that we're asking for bids to chip seal that nine-mile section this summer. And if we just get the culverts done, we'll be fine.
Yep, and that's-
So just so you're aware of that, we're kinda in a limbo there. And then also, we'll have to have a motion to go ahead and advertise our engineering on that Ramsey County nine project.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Kevin, you want?
I think that's it on, yeah, I do have a couple more things, but I think that's it on the Senate bill stuff. If anybody's got any questions on the Senate bill stuff, we can cover it while we're- One thing I should-
Pen blade fixed?
What'd you say, Murda?
Did we get the pen blade fixed?
Uh, yeah, that's come up later on, I-
Yeah, we've got a bill on them. Oh, that minimum speed limit, what, you're talking about fifty-five for trucks? Is that right?
Designed speed.
Designed, designed for fifty-five for trucks?
For, for like curves, horizontal, vertical curves, and then signed.
On any roads in the state, put money into it, right?
On the Senate bill.
Any projects that are getting paid under this bill, Senate bill?
Or one oh five-five, right?
Right, for reconstruction.
Only on reconstruction. If we're just doing like an inch and a half more blade on eight, we don't have to go to one oh five-five there.
Right.
If we go three inches on eight, then we have to go to one oh five-five, so. And the S, they have to be designed for fifty-five.
But they'll make exceptions, like for the curve on the truck route, where they posted a forty-five?
Should probably introduce Greg, I can't think of your last name. Thiel, the, that works for KLJ, and, uh, we're just kinda sitting there listening to it.
Okay.
I, I might have to have him sit in on a couple of them gone, so.
Very good. Okay, our bill from Butler, um, the original total bill, there was an injector that was out, so that, with the labor and the parts, was a thousand dollars. And the total came to nineteen thousand, two forty-five. So I did talk to them about getting that reduced, and they took, um, seven thousand dollars off of it. So the total bill on that pen blade will be twelve thousand, two forty-five ninety-one. And that'll be paid at the next meeting, but my approval now, or?
I don't know, I don't, unnecessary.
They don't expect to get paid. But just so you're aware, that they did take, the bill was higher than what they had estimated, but they did take seven thousand off of it. Any questions on that? Okay, then we got, uh, one, two, three, five of our summer maintenance contracts in that we should have a motion to sign those.
Aye.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
And then we have one more small thing to cover, that there was a, a culvert added on Ramsey County four over by Dwayne when we did that project, it's a, was a thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents, or six, thousand sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And we need to, to have a motion to go ahead and do that change order.
Aye.
Second.
A motion, second. That's already done.
It's done, it's in place, it's just the formality of-
Mertens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Isler?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Rob?
And that's all I have, you want to say something for me?
Well, anything else, Adam or Murda, anything for Kevin? Thank you.
I might come over to the real township board meeting, we're done here.
How do you?
All right.
Um, we need you to bring it up.
North central planning, that was nothing to do with me.
No, it's just the, the board to read it, so.
Hey, thanks, Kevin.
Okay, well, we're gonna do business approval, much of credits.
I want you to go through the most that's-
Question is, you got a second? Aye, there, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Lou Johnson Control, you changed there a little bit, or about the same as last year, or?
It went up, um, it was practicing four hundred dollars, which is not much. Um, and I would advise the board to do the three-year.
Three-year option?
Because it stays at that amount. It went up four hundred dollars from two thousand twelve, because we signed a three-year for the last time, so. So that's not bad.
It's worked out for the, for the county, and so.
Which is basically-
What are we getting as part of this contract, what do they do for us?
Well, anytime there's an issue with the boilers and the heating system, cooling, well, it's the heating system, they come in and they work on it, so.
And it's monitored, right?
It's monitored, right, there's a computer.
Every month, or that's checked, or?
Well, um, that would be, I'm assuming they do maintenance on it, but it's a Rogers.
Roger thing.
And Roger said this is very unreasonable, it's thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. We paid semi-payments, I think a payment twice a year, so.
And they do come look things over there, they have them out there.
And if we have to call them, if Roger comes in the morning and there's an issue, he calls them and they're within here before that we even open up, so.
Hey, Murda and Adam, did you hear a lot?
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Um, I didn't-
I'll make a motion to approve the three-year contract.
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, yeah. Do we roll call this, or not?
Yeah. Um, Isler?
Aye.
Mertens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Rob?
We have a new letter from, um, First Central Plan.
It's just for your reference that Sandy sent this out, um, the nuclear department helped, or they reviewed the asbestos on the Dolly Hills that we toured on. So that's demolished before the inspection date and all that, so. And then the other one is to accepting pre-applications for community with development block ramps, so if you know anybody that needs supply, the funds are available, it will be two hundred fifty-one thousand, five oh two. I think bills were, was north central planning on those block rats before.
Yep, and, and this isn't a whole lot of money, this has been cut down considerably since, uh, Rick had it, and, um, so it's starting to become a little bit more important that, uh, with, with people who need this stuff, get notified for it. I always used to tell Scott to tell him, oh, it, it more, because nursing home and, um, school and stuff like that, they've all utilized this program. But, uh, some, so I'll have to try to make an appointment to call up there and talk to the guy who runs the nursing home, see if she got everything done that she needs, but. Some of the projects that they've done are like small town sewer systems and lagoon systems and infrastructure and stuff like that, or, or like, or, I think windows and stuff like that, and some of these senior buildings and insulation and-
The chairlift that goes on to the memorial building, that was-
That was, yeah, so. So if anybody doesn't know, if you need anybody in a small town or something, and still you'd like the building for public use or something like that, uh, have them get ahold of Sandy and see if you can help them out if they need something. I think we put a new septic system block in here. Good, any else, sir? Do that one move into the chain of offering, say it out loud.
That is a, uh, there's a quiet title action that the city is anticipating starting. What they're asking here is rather than doing the sheriff's service on the county and having the chair, uh, sign the admission of service, uh, which is right there on the backside of that one. Um, apparently, the title to, a deed to some property somewhere in the past didn't get filed. It's property south of Highway two, uh, near where the new decorated wearables building is at. At one time, it was in the name of Great Northern Railroad. It was deeded to the county in about nineteen twenty-one. Uh, there was a county road that was platted through there at one time, that was subsequently vacated. Uh, and at some point, uh, when you look at the chain of title, there apparently was recently a title opinion done where they noted that there was a missing deed between the county and the city. Looking at the records, it appears that going back quite some time, it's in the title, the title is in the name of the city of Devil's Lake, but apparently somewhere along the lines, there wasn't a recording of a deed. So that, what they're doing here is they're seeking to quiet title to that particular area, and I think that was all given to you in the packet. I haven't looked at it a whole lot.
Is this something we need to act on, or is this something?
Well, you just need to authorize the chair to sign the admission of service.
So you need a motion on that?
Aye.
And the motion?
Second.
And the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else?
Um, I was just gonna bring up that Linda Ledbetter said if you would like to visit with her sometime in April, she will be available by phone. And, um, I did send it out what her comments were, so. If you guys want me to, I can contact her at the end of this month and see if she's available for the meeting, if you want to do a, be a phone call with her. I don't know if you guys wanna pursue it anymore or not, 'cause it was one of your requests at the last meeting, that I contacted her to come in and talk to you on the front section, so.
Well, I, I've got, I've got several questions for, but, you know, if everybody else is feeling real feeling like they know exactly what the rules are and how everybody in the state is, is, uh, working with them, um, you know, I can contact her constantly, but I, I think it would be in our best interest to, um, to know firsthand, with firsthand experience from the state, probably doing this issue.
Hey, Kevin or Adam, you got any thoughts on that?
Um, I guess, remember, it's a question answered in terms of, uh, how we should be administering it, if we're going to go forward with it, so. I, I went out on a visiting with her, I, you know, just asking-
So I, I wouldn't have a problem visiting with her, uh, if, you know, just asking questions, I suppose.
Like we're gonna have her on the phone? Okay. So we'll have her on the phone. Anything else? Anyone else?
You got anything to do to report on the, uh, law enforcement center?
No, I don't.
Okay. We're moving along?
We're moving along. Moving along, yeah. Got a meeting tomorrow morning.
Well, yeah, that's right, that's tomorrow, right?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing else? Motion, petition, or something else?